Hello, John. All right. I guess we can get started.
Yes.
All right, let me walk through the formalities. This open meeting of the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus, in order to mitigate the transition of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. All right, I think we know the rest of the drill. All right. So with that, I'd like to open the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for September 16th, 2020, at seven, what time is it actually? My clock is wrong. 7:37 PM. And on the agenda. If I can pull up the agenda. We have the continuation of application 2019-3 for Seville Street Groveland Realty Trust, LLC, care of William Bailey, request a comprehensive permit pursuant to the provisions MLG 40B 20-23 and 760 CMR 56 to construct 192 apartment units in four residential buildings, a clubhouse with related amenities such as pool and associated accessways, sidewalks, parking utilities, and stormwater infrastructure located in the industrial zoning district. Like to make a motion to reopen the hearing.
A second.
All those in favor? Chris Goodwin?
Hi.
Kathy Frampton?
Hi.
John Stokes?
Hi.
And I, Jason Normant. All right. And on the agenda tonight, I assume we are going over the responses in the list of from both the applicant and from the responses from the Conservation Commission on our discussions of all of the conservation aspects. But sure, the best way to start this, they both seem somewhat aligned in most of the areas.
May I offer a suggestion, Jason, as I typically do? If you could. I'd like to start and see if it's okay with you if we first start off with listening to Chip in his response. When we were last met, you sent us back with some homework to do. And one of them was, is we spent a tremendous amount of time discussing what was Mr. Dempsey's primary concerns. There were, I think, six items in total, of which Chip in his letter to the board responded. And I think that would probably be a good place to start. And we can see where we go from there.
All right, we want to walk through the points in the letter. It's not that long, so I think we can breeze through some of it pretty quickly and then get in to the additional points that Mr. Dempsey's letter raises.
Chip, you're muted.
There we go, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman members, for the opportunity to speak. If you recall, the last meeting that we had in August, I was stating that most of the items that Mr. Dempsey was asking for on behalf of the commission were things that we could take care of within an order of conditions under the Wetlands Act. And I heard the zoning board loud and clear that you'd like us to propose conditions that would address those items instead of deferring them to the Wetlands Act. So I spent some, a lot of time, we went through, I grabbed five or six orders of conditions that had been issued by the commission for residential, large residential projects like this, and a couple of commercial, and then put together what I thought would be a response to those questions. And then we waited until the commission met a week ago Wednesday night. And so we assumed that this matter would be on the commission's agenda, and there'd be a discussion with the commission that evening. But there wasn't any discussion with respect to the letter. I was surprised to see something on Friday. I guess the chairman probably put that together himself, but I thought that I might have the opportunity to hear the commission discuss this so that we could incorporate that into our conditions. As Joel, but that didn't happen. So as Joel indicated, we took a couple of items from you last time. First were the question of where the monuments are to establish where the wetland line is. And we've agreed to place them on the 20-foot, 25-foot line to protect and to identify where the buffer zone is. And so we've established that. Obviously, as you know, with the roadway the way it is, you can't put these monuments in the middle of the roadway. So that's what we picked. And I saw from other orders of conditions that there were varying numbers, but that appeared to be appropriate.
If I could add to that, just one comment is that you notice that there was a quantifier added to that, which, and Chip added in his letter, a very important point, is the substantial amount of land that's being gifted to the Conservation Commission or whoever body will own it naturally, whatever. And so we sort of split out the issue of where we were inside the 100-foot, it being important to establish monuments versus not doing them in lands that is not accessible to the public by vehicle, in the middle of all this other land being gifted, which, you know, those monuments would have lesser value. So I just wanted to add that as a point in that. Sorry, Chip.
No, no, no. And I think that's important because we skipped over the fact that, you know, of the 39 acres, more than 20 acres is going to be gifted, so part of it has already been gifted, will be gifted to public entities. So there's a substantial amount of open space, and we've, you know, done our best to stay out of the buffer zone and out of resource areas. So that's a good point, Joel. So thank you for reminding me. The second item, I think, had to do with erosion control. And we've established provisions in here for placing the erosion controls between the activity and the resource area, to have meetings with the Conservation Commission agent, and to have an inspection protocol that would take place at least once or twice a month where we would be reviewing the erosion controls and would provide a report to the commission. I think one thing you have to remember about this project, and you know Bill, he's a hands-on person. So this isn't the type of project, like I have other clients, where, you know, they have a project manager who's on site every day. Bill is out there every day. This is his community. He wants to make sure he does it right, and the erosion controls he'll keep an eye on. And there's a provision also that we have to keep a certain percentage available in the event that there are any repairs that are necessary. And that's, again, that's included in the proposed orders that I have provided to you. The next item that I had that was important were the seasonal restrictions. As you know, the commission said that they don't like to have activities between October and April. And we stated from the beginning that, you know, we understand that, and that, you know, we're not looking to do substantial work between October and April, but we do need to do work in connection with the natural heritage protected areas for maintenance and other work. So we asked that that be exempted, as well as the roadway work. So we've agreed to the seasonal restriction with those two exceptions, and I think that meets the commission's needs and also meets our needs. The last large one that I have on was the security issue, that the commission wanted to make sure that there's money available in the event that there's some type of a seasonal event, storm event, that could cause erosion controls to be damaged or need to be repaired. And, you know, I've recommended that we put a $5,000 passbook or otherwise made available to the commission, as I said at the last meeting, and again, said tonight. You know, Bill's on site. If there's anything that takes place out there, if there's any damage to anything from a unanticipated or a large storm event, you know, he's going to take care of it. But if, for some reason, the commission doesn't think that that can take place, they have access to a $5,000 passbook, they could, you know, hire somebody to come out, and then we're required to replenish those monies, so that there's always $5,000 that's in there. And then for, I guess the last one, I would say, it has to do with natural heritage. I think that there's an acknowledgement here, as I said before, there's a substantial amount of this open space that's going to be managed by a conservation management permit that has been issued by natural heritage. We actually received another, I'm not sure if Brian Butler's on tonight with us, but we've received all the permits from natural heritage. And so we want to make sure that there's no overlap, so that any requirements that we have with natural heritage are incorporated by reference in the condition, so that we will adhere to all of the requirements that they have. So my intention, Mr. Chairman and members, was, instead of pushing this down the road, was I provided you with specific conditions that can be attached to the overall decision and which would support the waivers that we have requested from the board. So I think that that was our intention, was to come a long way. We heard what the zoning board asked us to do, and I think that we've answered that by all of the conditions that we have included for you.
And if I could add that, you know, it should be noted again that this project is subject to an order of conditions. And so we have not had the opportunity, nor appropriate at this stage, to submit section application. And we are not by any means suggesting by the inclusion of these in what might be a decision that may be drafted and ultimately approved, that this is in any way precluding the Conservation Commission from doing its review at such time that an application was made, and issuing whatever conditions that they may impose upon that. This was really, you know, again, we had a meeting last time, and respectfully, we have gone through a very long approval process together, where there has been great questions asked, and many a times sent us back with the goal of coming back and trying to ensure that what we are proposing and suggesting to this board is responsible. I mean, you know, it was questions about making sure draining systems would function. It was about our fire department. And once again, in this particular case, we have, you know, brought forth what we believe are reasonable and appropriate for what we're asking the zoning board as part of their decision to render. Again, not suggesting that in any way this stops, prevents the Conservation Commission permission, whatever condition it has on the order conditions at such time we go in front of them.
Let me state too, for the record, that when Chip and I and Bill and Joel were going over these conditions, you know, we did so with an eye of, you know, being deferential and respectful to the conditions that the Concom does, but also we wanted to make sure that there would be seamless with 40B, that it would be, there'd be no gaps between the local bylaw treatment and the State Wetlands Protection Act, that where the state act leaves off, you would have, there would be a pretty seamless weld with the order of conditions, so to speak, in your decision. I hadn't seen too much of Mr. Dempsey's proposed conditions until they were submitted, but they actually, in large part, if not exactly in the letter, in spirit, they really match up pretty favorably with what we were trying to do here. I'm sure that there's some differences he may like to highlight, but they certainly read like we were both trying to get at the same thing. Oversight, redundancy, inspections, erosion controls, all those kinds of things. I think they're in both sets, worded a little bit differently, but really not that much at the end of the day.
Yeah, thank you. I do think they were very helpful, the conditions from both sides. And they do seem to be fairly well-aligned in most areas with just some, most of them just need some adjustments on one side of the, or, you know, some alignment on the specifics, I think, to get them accounted for and see where we stand. And with that in mind, I think one of the easiest ways to go forward is, I want to, you've had time to review Mike Dempsey's letter from September 11th, correct?
Yes, I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And I want to walk through this quickly, and Mike can feel free to chime in on any of these areas. I think there's a few things that I want to cover in terms of the, you know, some very specific areas that are different. And then we can also cover some of the stuff that's in one and not the other. But I figured it's easy to start with Mike's responses and his, really his conditions that he laid out. Starting with, on page two, number one, the no structures requiring a building permit in 75 feet of the resource areas. I believe that's covered. The only thing that's inside the, is the roadways and some markers, correct? I don't think there were any building structures in those areas.
There are no structures, there's also fire lane and some, obviously, slopes and stuff behind Building 3. But I don't believe that there's any structures other than things to support the slopes and roadways.
Is that, you're on?
We didn't include any, Mr. Chairman, we didn't include any prohibition, because there's no prohibition yet for those structures within residential zones. The only time that they prohibit structures is for commercial structures, and we don't have any here. So it would be certainly well beyond and above what they've ever done with any residential project.
Mr. Chairman, I don't appreciate that I'm being misrepresented here, either by some of the previous comments or some of the things that are being said about these conditions. First of all, I just would like to say that at the last meeting, you asked me to see what I could come up with as far as potential conditions that we would put on a project such as this, bearing in mind that we won't be able to address these issues under the Mass DEP filing. So that's what I did. These weren't discussed with the commission, there was no need to, this was a matter of pulling things out of previous and recent filing. Some of the items in the applicant's letter deal with things that are outdated. So they've been updated. But regarding this last comment about residential only, this is dealing with residential. The last time I was criticized because I claimed that we wouldn't allow a project such as this anywhere within 100 feet of it. So what I went, did was I went back and looked at some other permits and also looked at our bylaw. Our bylaws clearly states that residences are covered by a 75-foot no build zone. So that's what I put in here. Now, if the applicant read this, they would also see that that means that the roadways and the other utilities and grading, that they were so specific, they needed up to 25 feet, are not spoken about here. So, you know, I think the commission is willing to say, you know, go up to the 25-feet no disturb zone with your roadway or utilities or grading, but no building in the 75-foot zone. And from what you say, Mr. Chair, I think that fits, because they already said they don't intend to build within 75 feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, that's the impression I got, is that there is no intention to build. And we can certainly add that stipulation so that in the future, there's no confusion about putting up a shed or, you know, a large garage or anything in that area near the roadway, since it is right near the front there. The next three points are really about specifics on, basically, the ongoing maintenance. And I just wanted to check with the, I don't suspect there's any issues with these in particular. They sound, to me, they sound like pretty standard, but I don't really know any of the specifics. So I just wanted to let you both kind of, if you have any comments on those three around the fertilizer usage, the deicing, and the dumping of clippings and brush and such in the areas, and if there's any discussion overall on those topics that we need to address now.
Well, I certainly know that Chip and Jay may have specifics, but I'm a little confused about item number four and the fact that it's a rather large site, of which I understand that the Conservation Commission is concerned about its surrounding wetlands. But we also have an elaborate system. I mean, to sit there and say that it can't be used anywhere seems a little excessive, which differs from the issue of protecting where it abuts closely to a wetland. Just a comment. But Chip, you want to make further comment on it?
I think that's the most important one. I think that throughout these conditions that have been proposed, there are references to being required by the town's wetland bylaw, which I don't believe applies since you're the issuing authority, but also references to the project site, as Joel indicates in the first line. Number four says only non-sodium deicing compounds are used within the project site. It should be within the buffer zone, should be within jurisdiction, not, they don't have the authority under the bylaw to regulate outside of the buffer zone. And I'm hoping that this was an overstatement and wasn't intended, and that's what he meant, is that any, anything that we're talking about tonight only relates to activities that are taking place within the commission jurisdiction rather than on the entire project site.
If I may interrupt, is this not project in the aquifer protection zone? Because if it's under the aquifer protection zone, then these chemicals are also included under our local zoning bylaw as well. So not only the Conservation Commission, but the planning board as the special permit granting authority for the aquifer special overlay would be considered.
Well, we've already been through that planning board, as my understanding is, and it's received an approval. So I think that that's already been addressed.
Not with the filling activities, there was nothing in the aquifer. There was a permit or an approval for the stormwater management and land disturbance, but the aquifer overlay is a completely separate special permit.
I'm going to have to defer to you, Joel.
I'm actually momentarily stumped, so I'm going to let even Bill. Bill, I'm sorry to engage you. He said you weren't going to talk tonight, but you're stuck. You have the answer to this question better than I do.
I don't, I don't, I didn't know we had to go through planning. I thought the ZBA would act with planning. I thought planning was asked if they had any concerns. So I don't know, I know I'm in Zone 2 and 3, so I don't know how that plays out, but...
I don't think anything specific, I just meant that there's certain regulations in the aquifer bylaw that requires you to do certain things. So it might be something that we address conditionally, like you would have to waive from any other bylaw or local regulation. I don't think that they're insurmountable either. I just meant that in terms of deicing compounds and things of that nature, in an aquifer special permit, we often do have conditions limiting the use of such because of the sensitivity of the area.
So then, could I suggest then that we would say that the non-sodium deicing compounds would be used within the buffer zone and shall also comply with the requirements of the aquifer protection zone?
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't say I agree with that, because it doesn't mean that if you put it 10 feet away from the buffer zone, it doesn't mean that the rain isn't going to come along, and when that snow melts, it's going to end up in the buffer zone. So the other thing I was going to suggest is that this is actually pretty standard. So if you hire a company to do your plowing, which I assume you will, you just tell them they can only use calcium chloride. Most of them are doing it now anyway. They're all switching over to everything, everything over to calcium chloride. So I really don't think it's a debatable thing. I think you just tell your snowplow guy, calcium chloride only by local bylaw. I think it's pretty simple. But I think what they're trying to protect is the buffer zone. And even if you put salt on, you know, the, first of all, you're not supposed to put salt on concrete anyway.
No, no, we don't.
So this is the point. So if you use the calcium chloride, it'll protect your concrete, it'll protect your asphalt, and it'll protect the buffer zone. So I don't really see that using calc, using the actual salt behooves anybody. So I think it's an appropriate condition to put on the...
With that, we use calcium chloride. I mean, I read it here that, you know, signs saying low-salt zone would be required. I mean, that's...
Yeah, I don't see what the purpose of that really is. It's that we are indicating where they need to stay out of an area due to turtles. We are marking where the buffer is, but I don't think we need to do that. If it proves to be that we have a ice problem, then it would behoove us, from a management standpoint, to then appropriately post something to warn drivers, but I don't think that's appropriate here as a condition, though. I think that should be stricken.
What difference does it make? You're going to figure it out, and if you have a nice problem, there's plenty of other compounds you can use.
No, no, that wasn't the question. Bill's comment was...
I understand the low-salt sign, but what difference does it make? You want to make sure that every plow guy who comes in, because you know they're all subcontractors, all I do, they come in, they need to know that they're in a sensitive area. I don't think that's inappropriate, especially when everything's covered in snow and they can't tell.
They would know on the contract, and I don't think there's another project in town that has anything like this. And going back to...
That's not true. There are other projects that have this, Nichols Village being one.
Has a sign up, Mr. Dempsey? They have a sign posted?
Yes, they have signs posted.
Okay, listen, we don't need to spend an exorbitant, let's move on to the next point. I understand what the...
Let me suggest this too, and Paul would know this for sure. Having a condition in a big 40B that has no sodium-based deicers is pretty common. So I mean, I agree with Kathy on that, I agree with Rebecca. What I think is, would be fruitful is that we marry it up to what we're seeing for a condition out of the aquifer protection zone. And as long as you use it elsewhere, that kind of condition in town, whether it was signage or otherwise, I think we come to the right condition. I think in concept, we're fine on this. We're just, no need to get nitpicky on the...
We're just, no need to get nitpicky on the language right now, I don't think.
You think all these people on the call, we can't all wordsmith it? I'm only kidding.
Before we go too far, I just wanted to jump back one second for to comment number three. I was just going to suggest, it says there shall be no dumping of leaves, grass, clipping, brush, or other debris. I'd like to add snow to that as well. I know that specifically on the plan, there are snow storage areas, but I don't want them pushing snow up over into the buffer zone and into the, to the wetlands. So I just want to make sure it's documented. Mike, would you agree with that?
Sure.
I agree with that. I just want to be clear, and for the record, is this list of 27 items, I was under the impression we went through this list last month. Are we incorporating these into the board's decision tonight, like that dumping of grass what we just agreed on? Are we going to go down these 27 items again? Because, you know, truthfully, we spent a lot of time and addressed the must haves in our bullet points, and that's really, that's really where I'm at. And I mean, I don't want to go through each one of these items this evening and pick out which one's going to be in the decision and which one isn't, when these are pretty, pretty basic items that we could do through an order of conditions.
I understand where you're coming from, Bill. But the issue is, is that if we don't address some of these items now and we grant you a waiver through your application, then Mike has no standing in order to implement those items. So we need to address the local bylaw items here so that when you get there, and actually it behooves you, Bill, because you're going to get to the end and you're going to have it already mapped out, and you're going to say to Mike, we're ready, this is what we've got, and you don't have, there'll be a lot less, you know, arguing later. Like, let's figure it out now. Everybody, and then everybody's on the same page. Zoning, building enforcement, I mean, zoning enforcement officer, planning's on board, you know, like, if you do it now, it's all done.
If we go through this now, all these 27 items, and we get in, let's say 12, are you saying that when I go with my NOI, I should be in CONCON for one meeting because it's already...
Well, I can't speak for CONCON, but what I can say to you is that if you work out some of these items now, it's less to go over when you get to that point. Am I correct, Mr. Dempsey?
Yes. You know, and we aren't going to be able to put these, any of these conditions in, into our DEP decision. Bill knows that.
I disagree with that, but I think we agree that if we, if they're going to be in one, they could be in the other. So I don't want to split hairs here because every single one of the conditions we've gone over already, with the exception of number four, which talks about things outside of the CONCON's jurisdiction, are things that we would see in an order of conditions anyway. But I, so I don't really, so I, I'm perfectly fine doubling up and having some redundancy. There's no quarrel with that whatsoever, but the suggestion that he can't do them is untrue. I just want to be clear on that.
We can do them, but they're not enforceable, sir.
Well, that's untrue too, but again, the redundancy is fine. I just want to state for the record...
We already heard from the attorney for the, for the ZBA exactly what I'm saying at the last meeting, so I don't know where you're getting this.
Because I do this for a living.
But they're not enforceable under the deep mass DEP.
Well, rather than to sit here and get caught right at this moment, why don't we go through and I guess the items and see where we disagree, because it doesn't mean we absolutely will agree to everything that has been suggested here, and nor it wouldn't be fair to say that all things should be inclusive in a decision. So just to continue time, why don't we go and find out where we differ?
Mr. Chairman, it would be very helpful for me in completing the draft decision to actually go through all of these proposed conditions and have a sense as to which ones are not objectionable and which ones the applicant actually does object to.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing because most of them align pretty closely with just some, you know, minor nuances here and there. So I think, my hope is that some of these will be pretty quick, so it's not going to drag into a 20-minute discussion about each of these conditions. I don't think we're really that far apart that we need to get into. And then we, you know, in the draft, we can compile how they all, Paul can help us compile how they all fit together and how they align with the other elements of the permit. So with that, I think we've thoroughly discussed the nuances of the conditions two, three, and four. Is there anything else that the board or anybody else needed to raise on those?
We do not.
We just don't want the signs. I mean, there's going to be more signage down there, you know, between other, there's a lot of calls for signs. I just don't want the low salt signs. Whoever, this is the project, those don't want.
All right, we can bring that up. We need to keep that on the notes, and then when we align it, you know, we can discuss it also. In regards to the conservation markers, these two notes on those seem pretty well-aligned.
Well, actually, Jason, they really don't because unless I'm misunderstanding something here, so let me, it's suggesting that we put them on the entire property. Well, I don't think they should go on any land as an example, as a starting point, that we're gifting to the Conservation Commission and/or whoever. I think that there's no reason to do that. So there is some, you know, limitations here. Otherwise, it's a huge amount of linear footage for no reason.
Okay, so...
Well, it says that, Mike, you specifically commented that the locations discussed. Can you clarify what that, what your understanding of that was?
I'm willing to include the exclusion of the area that the applicant notes in their description of it. I think the biggest difference really is the placement of him where I asked for along the 100-foot buffer, and the applicant says they're going to be, I believe at the 25-foot buffer.
Well, that's where, Mr. Dempsey, let's start off with wherever we are, our roadways and whatever else was very much specifically why in those areas we said 25, since we were doing something within the other area. So you can't put 100-foot, obviously, marker if you're already 60 feet into the wetland, it would be in the middle of the roadway.
Right, obviously. Obviously, so we make exceptions, obviously, for that. So what I would say is, you know, go through the plans and provide the zoning board with a plan that shows where the markers can go at 100 feet and where they can't as close as possible to the 100-foot buffer.
Well, we've provided language to you in my D1, which sets the buffer zone monumentation at 25 feet, also excludes it from the fish and wildlife, natural heritage, regulated property, which has its own separate markings. So I'm not, I think you should be...
And Mr. Dempsey just agreed with you, Chip. He just agreed that those areas would be excluded.
My point is, is that we should be using our language rather than what Mr. Dempsey's asking for us to do is to go back, put it on a plan. We're going to be here for another couple of months while we go through this list. Purpose of tonight was to take care of these items so that we could close the hearing, get this behind us.
Well, taken.
I also like to add this, for my prior order conditions that we closed out, I have them placed just about all the way up to the newly acquired parcel, the Deviase pit. And in that order, they were to be placed on the 25-foot buffer line. So those are already there. To get up to the DFW lands, a few hundred more feet, so it would just continue down that line. I don't need to place them, show where they'd be placed, they're already there, except for a handful of them. And the other order said right in there to be placed along, every 50 feet along the 25-foot buffer line. And I also said at the last meeting that that was, would be an automatic appeal. I mean, you saw the design that this was, you know, we were in the 100-foot buffer, so the 100-foot buffer was non-negotiable. It was designed to be in there. If I stayed out of the 100-foot buffer, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I wouldn't even need a order of conditions. So I said last time, to move out of the 100-foot, everything would have to be redesigned. And I thought I was pretty clear on that last month.
Well, we're not asking you to do that, Bill.
Yeah, so Bill, there's two parts to this question, if I could, Mr. Dempsey. The first one is, is there a specific way in which they want the markers, the type of markers placed? So I think, let's bifurcate this thing to parts so we can move past it. So Mr. Dempsey described one method. You have done what so far? How have you denoted it? What have you used?
I've done the nine grade of markers, and I will continue those same markers along that 25-foot buffer line to the natural heritage lands that will have its own signage per my conservation management permit.
And in the area that we're talking about from the entrance to that point, we've only developed it, it's roadways up to that point. We've done nothing and have no buildings anywhere close.
They're already in place from the, from the beginning of the property, almost up to within 300 feet of DFW lands. So there's only another 300, 400 feet to mark.
Mr. Dempsey, since we're really, I think, almost saying the same thing, though, Bill has really done the work. I don't see why agreeing to the way he sort of described it doesn't really look after the best interest of conservation and is a fair and reasonable approach to resolving through this. Just trying to help this along.
I'll concede that point.
Okay. Item number six. Don't we have, we have a requirement we discussed in past meetings, please correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, I know, I think you brought this thing up about behind building three to make sure we already educate our residents in the fact that we abut a habitat. Is that not correct? Wasn't that an earlier discussion we had had?
Yes, I was hoping that there would be just some sort of heads up to the people who live there, who might be visiting, that they are, you know, treading close to protected land and turtles.
And we, and we agreed to that. So I, again, I don't know why that wouldn't suffice for the requirement rather than have to put something at an entrance. I mean, we're not entering, and I know, again, we abut these lands, we care about the turtles, that's why we're doing all that, that noting it where we abut is probably honestly more powerful than putting at the entrance, other than it's a national parks advertisement because somebody may forget, somebody may be reminded. To me, it's more important to put it where you say, don't go any further, this is protected land. So I, that's why I think we agreed, Kathy, to your idea back yonder. It was reasonable and it was effective. And again, Mr. Dempsey, you weren't part of those discussions, so in all fairness, that was a earlier discussion where they were trying to get an understanding of the board of the relationship between the habitat lands and stuff that fell within, you know, natural heritage and our project. And that's how those discussions went about. So again, I think we're saying the same thing, but I actually like the approach that Kathy took earlier on. I think it's a better approach. Is that okay?
I don't think it's unreasonable. Number six is unreasonable, so I'll leave that up to the board to decide.
Okay. Okay, let's move to item number seven because we will come back to that.
Yeah, so this gets into the erosion control sections, which, again, seem mostly to align. Do we want to discuss that as a whole or walk through?
Let me first ask Chip, who probably has the greatest knowledge. Chip, where did we differ?
Well, two things. First of all, Mr. Dempsey made a representation to us that the bylaw prohibits residential projects within 75 feet. I've been looking at the bylaw for several years. I looked again after he made that representation, and there isn't one. There is one for commercial, but if there's one for residential, then I would ask him to point me to that. So the reason I raised that is because he's asked for the limit of erosion control to be on the 75-foot buffer, and what we've tied it to is where the erosion controls will be, which will obviously differ depending upon slope and activity. You want to make sure that you have the right erosion controls depending upon the rate of water that could be entering the area. And that could differ. Some places it might be 75 feet, in other places it might be 50 or 25. My language was very specific. You know, we have the plan, it will be approved by the Conservation Commission. We have a meeting with the Conservation Commission agent three days before we install them. We have a meeting after to make sure that they've been installed the right way, and we've used the same language Mr. Dempsey has with a minimum of 10% additional bales. I found that in other orders, and I incorporated that as well in my B1 and B3. So I think it really has to be site-specific in terms of how we're proceeding. So that's...
Okay. To that end, I'm going to, again, I'm trying to help drive this thing. To that end, we had in the peer review, a requirement in the plans that we incorporated and also go to the issue of erosion control. That plan was then subsequently reviewed by the town's peer review agent, and ultimately they all reached resolve on it, did they not, Bill? Right, am I correct? The erosion control was part of the plan?
Correct.
Correct. So therefore, again, Mr. Dempsey may not have the benefit of seeing that, but this did go through peer review, and we still feel that the plan that we presented that was ultimately approved by the peer review agent suffices for the type of erosion control that's appropriate for this site and the specific conditions in which this site has because as Chip just said, it varies. So in all fairness, Mr. Dempsey, you should review that because I think that that really satisfies the requirement, and it certainly was reviewed independently by the town's peer review consultant.
Couple of questions. So what is the minimum space between the resource area and the line of hay bales?
If you're asking to test me, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer right.
That would be on the site plan. We haven't filed the notice of intent with the commission, so that's whatever's on the site plan, which Bill would know.
And wouldn't this be part of what would go in for as part of an order of conditions? It's specific on this. So again, I understand that we're asking the ZBA to step in, but we also do have to come back and present these types of things to you as well.
They're going on the 25-foot buffer line for the most part. Well, you want to keep these away from the work also so that they're there for longer, not getting wiped out by earthworks activities, but which is in line with the last order conditions that we had on the property.
Yeah.
Are there, are there other areas where they are more than 25 feet away?
I like going on the 25-foot because you set them up once and you're done. I mean, it's expensive to set them up, and you know, the further they are, the safer they are, and the better they're going to work. If you put them on the 75 and you're grading within 10 feet of them and they're getting knocked over and washed out, they're not doing anything. But for the most part, we're going up close to that 25.
That's down by the roadway and stuff, Bill. I understand. Unless I'm misunderstanding, Mr. Dempsey, we refer into the balance of the site as we construct other areas, because remember, this is not a pristine piece of ground to start with that has, you know, really, they're only stable because they're packed down, but even then it's being filled. So there's a lot of dynamics on the issue of quote-unquote erosion control. There's erosion control for the fill operation, and then there's erosion control for the development of project. I'm not sure we ultimately differ on the intent of what we're both trying to accomplish, though again, I think it's spelled out pretty well in the site plans package that the peer review consultant reviewed.
Well, I'm going by Mr. Nylund's comments about his explanation of why and where you would place erosion controls at... at different distances from the resource area. So I believe that we can, you know, I'm not writing these conditions. These are conditions that if we put them, if we, they aren't necessarily enforceable under DEP. But we can address this under the mass DEP filing specifically, because again, I haven't seen that. And these are you know, theoretical per se, theoretical conditions based on the fact that we wanted to stay out of the 75 foot buffer, but we've already, I've already conceded that. So then, as long as I conceded that, then we'll have to have it addressed in the mass DEP. So that can be skipped.
Okay. And again, I just just a bit of comment, and it's not our intent to do anything to hurt the abutting resource areas. So I think we really probably even philosophically agree to this anyway to where we're ending up. So, okay, so number eight.
Let me just say, Joe, when he says skip, I think that that means that we're not saying that we don't want a provision in here for erosion control. I don't think in my 35 years I've ever seen a project that falls down because of erosion control or DEP is going to overturn, you know, a commission's requirements. So I think, Mr. Chairman, we don't have to put the 75 feet. Then I think our language, which talks about you know, a process where the where the applicant works with the commission in terms of the location and inspection is something that still should be included in the conditions.
I agree. I'm sorry.
I think that's certainly the wording here where it's basically not strictly defined based on the the buffer, you know, distance specifically, but more of a a review of where the the engineers think it should go. I think that's acceptable.
Okay.
Yeah, what I meant was to remove my wording of it, I'm fine with the applicant's wording under one, three of their section B.
Plus, Paul's going to reference the plan set that's also provided that has all those other notes to it already added as well, too. So they're going to end up by default inside the decision. Okay, number eight.
I think that's the same as I think we both, that's one where we're aligned. I have a reference to C4 for mine, so I I believe that we're both talking about doing the same thing there.
Okay.
Which is to clean the catch basin, so that's part of operation and maintenance.
Agreed. I know Jason's writing. I could see him keep going there, taking the notes. Numbered.
Number nine, I'm not sure how specific we can get into this. It sounds rather vague from a legal perspective about what the the definitions really are, where the, I understand the intent. I'm just wondering how the wording could be done that would be acceptable on both sides to avoid any confusion about the gradient where the the water conditions were measured from and, you know, what constitutes a significant difference and all that kind of stuff. So I'm sure if we have any thoughts on that.
Mr. Dempsey's well aware, and I'm a former Conservation Commission member and so is Amy of Sean, and so is Jay. I mean, the general standard is, is that you cannot alter a wetland resource area. The problem with this kind of language is with the watersheds, there are lots of different sources. So it's hard to draw a nexus between this project and a down gradient wetland resource area, which could be well offsite and which could be subject to other sources in a watershed. So I think that the the commission, which has issued enforcement orders and knows how to do that, I think that we should just stick to what the regulations are, which is that we can't alter a wetland resource area with our work.
Mr. Dempsey? Is that is that acceptable?
Well, I don't know. To me, it's pretty clear. You go off into that stream that's right next to where the roadway is and you see sediment coming in, being washed in like has occurred there in the past. And we don't want that to happen. So I don't understand, you know, how unclear that, how much more clear this could be. And, you know, it's specific to the site. We're not talking about a mile down the road. They're claiming something is coming from your site, so.
Well, I know you're not an attorney, but your language says in down gradient wetland resource areas, it doesn't say anything about being on the property or off the property, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we could change it to say on the property, right? If you want to be more specific, we can say water quality on the property in the wetland resource area shall not differ significantly.
If you're looking, you're looking to eliminate sedimentation, let's let's say there shall be no sedimentation, but you know, water quality is turbidity, it's temperature. I mean, there are lots of different criteria that apply to water quality. This is, you know, this is too wide open and I don't know what it gets you. If we have an erosion control plan, we have a provision that we can't cause sedimentation into the into the intermittent stream, whatever we call that stream, then that should suffice what you're looking for.
So there's the word sedimentation, Mr. Dempsey, if we stay on the on the property or talk about it, does that, is that okay as a clarification point?
I think the second sentence is probably okay. The first sentence is problematic is I think where we're getting. I mean, especially if we have a stream which is going to be a receiving wetland from all kinds of sources potentially when it when it does happen to be running. It's intermittent, but it will run at some point. It's going to be accepting. It's on our property at points, but it's going to be accepting sources from elsewhere. So I think that the second sentence is I mean, it's just stating what we've already accomplished through our our erosion control. The first sentence is problematic for the reasons that Chip stated.
Okay, so we'll remove the first sentence.
Okay. Item number 10. Again, we suggested what is a in our estimation, and we can cover a couple of topics all at the same time. Requirements regarding the town's rights of funding an account to ensure that what happens if there's no performance. And we think that that's fair and reasonable. You know, to it, I guess we never really got in, Mr. Dempsey, you're reviewing Chip's letter of the the day before. Are the conditions laid out in this letter as it relates to this item, the funding of an account and stuff, can we get specific about which one of those are problematic or whether or not they satisfy the intent of what the parties are, which is to give the town some rights here, which we're not objecting to?
I think this, in in number 10, I wanted to raise, you know, the primary difference, and really, as far as I can tell, the only difference is Mr. Dempsey's note specifically calls out without prior notice, whereas the applicant's note calls where with reasonable notice. So I think we need to come to alignment on what what the specifics are, you know, who, what notice would be required or what notice is reasonable if we're going to give notice or require notice.
Okay, well, it's fair to ask the question of what it's meant by that, but the answer is notices is an ongoing project. We don't really like people from an insurance standpoint just to wander on the site, of course. It's just that's problematic. I think what the board is looking for is, well, what happens if you don't respond? So that being said, Chip, do you have a suggestion on the word of what reasonable might be defined as?
Well, it could be, you know, 24 hours. I think that that would be reasonable. Again, you know, Bill, I'm hoping that once we get past this permitting, that we get into a more, you know, cooperative venture with the commission that if they think there's something going on, they pick up the phone, they call Bill and and they come out to the site.
I think 24 hours is fair and reasonable in the fact that notice should be provided. And we just don't want people, we don't want anybody to get hurt. That's, I mean, you know, when you talk about notice. So it seems like it's a reasonable situation of which I know every hour counts if there was some problem, but I don't think 24 hours is necessarily an unreasonable number.
I have this as a note on this, too, because I've run, you know, construction sites and stuff like that, and you do run into some issues with insurance. So and especially with building inspectors and stuff, you're not allowed to have anybody on site unless, you know, they've you know, signed in, they have a hard hat, they have like all this list of items. So some notice would, I think, is appropriate. Do I think it needs to be long notice? Not necessarily. But it should be like, hey, heads up, we'd like to come by tomorrow and check on because we had a bad rainstorm. I don't think that's unreasonable, but I think from a construction standpoint, it is difficult to just let people come and go whenever they like, because everything, some things are fenced off and it's just, it can be problematic.
You just don't know if a site contractor dug a hole that night and didn't properly mark it, and next thing you know, somebody falls into it. Exactly right. Though there's some inspectors I would like to fall in holes. But that's a different matter.
If you're managing your site properly, then that would never be an issue because you have OSHA standards that would say what you need to do around holes.
I absolutely, I don't disagree, Kathy, and I certainly was exaggerating, but it does create situations where there's uneven terrain. So, you know, and
And that was what my thought, too. Yes.
So is 24, Mr. Dempsey, okay? Chip offered, Bill might have said more than that, but Chip offered it on his behalf. So does that satisfy the concern?
Two hours. I want to get in there in the same day. If there's a weather problem, we get reports from a neighbor that something's coming out, I want to get in there in the same day.
I need to, I need to talk about this item, too. Two hours is you know, I can't get a call back with the same week from 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 the commission at times. So the two hour notice, I mean, are we talking only for rain events? Because this this item talks about anytime and inspect. So we talk and they just want to come and inspect after or during a rain event. And it's got to be more than two hours. I just, I know I'm not getting anything for nothing here. I know no one's gonna 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 give me a hall pass with anything here, but I get at least be given the same courtesy as the other developments in town at a minimum. Okay? Two hours notice, I mean, I drive around town. I see what's going on. Two hours notice to come in my place, you know, with a key to my lock, unaccompanied, is absolutely not negotiable. And that's that. I mean, I'm not, I thought, again, I thought we went through this list. I'm okay. We'll go through it again for the third time, the third month in a row. But I mean, we're talking about things that can be easily covered, you know? We were supposed to meet in July with Mike and you were no call, no show for that. I got everybody there, everybody last month. I got everybody again this month. And we're talking about dumping leaves in the wetlands as part of the ZBA comprehensive permit, which I'm okay. We can go through these items, but two hours notice to go in unaccompanied is is that's not reasonable. I just, if that's happening somewhere else on site, that's fine in town, but I just want to be afforded the same the same you know, restrictions or covenants as others in town. I mean, the two hours is, I mean, that doesn't even sound right. Come, we want to get in there right away. I've never heard such a thing. So.
I think I think it's an unreasonable request, and we would therefore turn to the board here in this particular case and say, obviously, we have disagreement. We think 24 hours is reasonable. And and look for you to obviously arbitrate this as part of your decision.
Even even with the enforcement, even if with the breach, it's not, even if there was a discharge, you know, from an event, I have 24 hours to correct that issue.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you in two hours, Bill, if you were aware of it, couldn't necessarily resolve it if it required getting somebody in there to provide assistance to it. So I agree, it doesn't leave any rights, anything to self-correct an issue if it happened and you were aware of a rain event. I think 24 hours is reasonable. And I hold and look to the board to say that that's that's fair and reasonable in this particular situation.
If my track record showed numerous actions or enforcements, that's one thing, but but there's nothing. So I don't.
Well, Bill, I asked for a site visit months ago and you put me off. You said, well, gee whiz, with COVID, we can't really accommodate it. Why don't we wait till things quiet down? I never heard back from you.
You want to do it in an hour from when you called me.
You said, okay, so you said, put it off. We put it off. Have I heard from you about it? No.
I think we're digressing. I think that we should get back to the point. I think Bill's made his point pretty clear. That 24 hours, I think that's pretty reasonable given everything. As as someone who represents towns, I think 24 hours is pretty fair and usual. We see 48 hours. So we also counsel our boards and agents not to go on a property if it's an unsafe condition or if you're not invited on. So I think that 24 hours makes sense. And I think we should stay away from the side discussions.
Yeah, I think that's, for this particular, I think there's other ways we can account for emergency situations and that kind of stuff in other, there's other areas that account for what could happen in an emergency situation. But in terms of a general inspection, I think that's a reasonable timeframe or.
Well, I just I think emergencies are the key under this, Mr. Chairman. And I would also note that there's no other development going on in town currently that has a locked site. And, you know, if there's an emergency, the commission can go on the site and observe it and then order further action be taken if it warrants. So.
But that's where the 24 hours is going. Nobody's denying you or suggesting that after a 24 hour notice, should the app, should the owner fail to respond to you that the commission shouldn't be afforded rights? I mean, I think that what we're splitting, what we're differing on is what that notice period is. Two hours, assuming Bill's available, not available for the commission to go on to a safe or unsafe situation, it just it just doesn't seem reasonable. So we've stated, and I think we've both worked through this point, and it's up to the board to decide how they wish to proceed. Okay, number 11. Chip, you want to respond to this? And it really goes to 11, 12, and really 13, all in one.
So I I believe I took my language from in a couple of orders that I had read from from Chairman Dempsey and a couple of other projects where if if there's a need, if I believe that there's already going to be a town's inspectional engineer under one of the approvals, and if there's an additional engineer that's necessary, a wetland scientist that would be retained at our expense under the provisions, and I cite the statute that allows the the applicant to pay for a monitor at its own expense. And then the rest sets what the requirements are in terms of inspecting, providing reports twice a month and in responding to any emergencies that may come up. So in the only difference is, is that his language has the person given the authority to stop construction for erosion control purposes or any other threat to wetland resources. to stop construction for erosion control purposes or any other threat to wetland resources, which I think should be within the province of the Conservation Commission under normal procedures, rather than to have somebody out there who's able to stop work from taking place, who's a consultant. So I'd love to strike that last, if we go with their language, to strike that last sentence in number 11. But the other, we we agree on the others in terms of having monthly reports that that are submitted to the to the commission and to have, you know, a third person, an independent third party looking at the site if that's, if the commission deems that necessary.
So you're saying you would accept 11, 12, and 13 as is, except for that last sentence in number 11, right?
Well, I'm saying I don't see a difference between what I have included and what you have. The only difference is that you start with an environment monitor, wherein in my language, it's if the town's inspector thinks that one is required.
So your suggestion is you want to trigger inside, Chip, rather than just it outright from the start?
Yeah, I think, again, it's based upon what's taking place out there. And if the town's inspection person thinks that they need some assistance with a wetland scientist, then there's a process for that to take place and we'll certainly comply with that.
My one concern, or just I guess question, is, I guess even for Paul, is that in the decision and the way that we address some of these conditions specifically on the matters that overlap between other permitting authorities that would typically be in place, like the planning board for a residential development of such and subdivision rules and regulations, the stormwater management and all that other stuff. Is there, is it common to try and put conditions that are, they complement each other? Or is it, you know, I'm just worried too with like getting too specific in agreements of conditions of monitoring where other permits are going to require monitoring and who's going to do the monitoring? And it's not just a matter of redundancy, but of conflict?
Rebecca, the the thing is, that's the entire point of the comprehensive permit process, is to have that single permit that really is the the permit that controls all developments. Obviously, leaving aside the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Board of Health under Title V, those are separate. It certainly doesn't hurt to try to coordinate the conditions between those rules and the comprehensive permit. And I think that's what we're doing currently. But ultimately, the board is going to be the entity that has the enforcement authority over this and that should be imposing its own conditions. And I did want to clarify that point, because in some of these other conditions that we've been talking about, it mentions that the Conservation Commission would have the right to go on and observe and issue orders. The Board of Appeals will retain jurisdiction over the local wetlands bylaw for this project under the comprehensive permit. Certainly, the board is well within its rights to appoint, say, the Conservation Commission's agents to act as its agent in overseeing this project. But what the board may not do is transfer its authority as as oversight of this project to any other.
And that's what our intent was, Paul, is that if you have the inspector, then if they think they need a wetland person to assist in the review, then that would trigger it so that it wouldn't be an overlap, that would be complementing the the town's inspection authority.
And I think we referenced, I think we referenced the zoning enforcement agent too, Paul, as in having the the general zoning enforcement, because this is a zoning decision.
Well, and that's something that's, you know, will be in the draft decision as well, in terms of who would have oversight. Sometimes it's the zoning enforcement officer in the initial basis. Sometimes it would be the planner, zoning administrator. So that's an issue for the board, you know, really to make a determination as who it wants the point person to be. Because obviously, you're not going to be sitting there, you know, overseeing on a daily basis what happens there. It's more so that your jurisdiction extends that if a problem occurs and there's a question as to enforcement of the local bylaw, you're the entity that actually enforces it.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I suspect some of my concerns are around the expertise of somebody like the building inspector enforcing erosion control and concerns around that area. It is somewhat accounted for in the wording with the the site inspections and the review of erosion control and the reports and all of that. I'm just not sure if Mike has specific concerns about expertise and what the town actually has available to kind of do these reviews and keep up with them.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, is is there a conservation agent that can act as the agent for the board in administering this decision? As it pertains to the wetlands issues?
Well, they do have an agent.
So so I would presume that that's what would occur. Is any issues that occur during the construction or beyond then that involve wetlands, you would have the conservation agents acting as the board's agents in the first instance, as they normally would for the commission under the local wetlands bylaw. The only difference is that if the conservation agent sees a problem and has to report back, the reporting back goes to the Board of Appeals in this instance, rather than the Conservation Commission, because this is a chapter 40B development.
Well, they actually go to Rebecca.
Reporting back. They would also be reporting back to the Conservation Commission under its jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act as well.
Correct.
I have a quick question, Mr. Dempsey. So you do have someone on your, in your group, I assume, that would do those conservation or the conservation agent, right?
Yes, unfortunately, they're only available 12 hours a week.
Okay, so what, because when I read this, was it number, number seven on Attorney Niles? It just said, I sort of just made a quick note, authorized agents of the town, including the zoning enforcement officer and the conservation agent. And I also thought we should add or and or a third party hired by the town monitoring company. So if, for example, the conservation agent, they didn't have a conservation agent available, then the town could appoint one, let's say, a third party who could go and act on behalf as for the town. So that was the only thing I wanted to just add to that language, because if there isn't one available, we we would have to hire somebody, I guess.
Well, I've gone one step further and said that if if the agent or the building inspector, whoever's out there, comes to a conclusion that they don't want to inspect and they think that's something for someone else, that there's a process and that we would pay for that consultant to come on on board. So it just wasn't automatic, it would be triggered by the town saying, we need a third party. That's the only difference between.
And so my proposal with regard to this condition would be to revise it to state that it would be the conservation agent acting as the board's agents to make the determination as to whether or not retaining environmental monitor is necessary.
Right.
Mr. Dempsey, is that something that you're okay with?
That's okay.
Great.
Thank you, Paul.
Does that take care of everybody, 11, 12, and 13 on the list?
Well, you know, I think if you read 12 and 13, they're regarding reports on a regular basis, every month. So I think the board getting these reports is very useful. Copy sent to both the board and the commission would be even more effective. They could be done by the reporting party that the board appoints anyway. And then if there's an environmental problem, as noted in 11, then that can be included or written by the conservation agent.
Mr. Dempsey, have you just read in item number six, section C of Chip's letter? Because I thought that was addressed by his suggestion, again, trying to understand that reporting is required. So.
Yeah, I think the number six calls for bi-monthly site inspections and a report that'll be presented out of that.
Right, and but it adds one important thing in there also. Reduction inspection frequency will be at the sole discretion of board's inspection, but inspections will continue into the jurisdictional areas stabilized in compliance with this decision. So there's two very important concepts in there, because obviously, once you achieve that, there's no reason to continue inspection. So putting some sort of end date in place, but leaving it at the sole discretion of board's inspectional engineer, I think to say that, in fact, they have stabilized in compliance with the decision, I think takes care of protecting everybody's interest.
Well, can we go to monthly on your C6?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, when I looked that up, Mike, I'm always confused whether bi means twice a month or every two months, and it depends on what you, what you look at. So the intention was to be twice a month. So.
So the answer is we'll go back to once a month, it's okay too. Yeah, I mean, I think there's two different issues here. I mean, there's the practical one where we should write into the decision, obviously, monthly. And then goes the issue that there'll be points in time where we are doing tremendous amount of work potentially in a particular area where obviously, you know, oversight is important, not only for, this is going to be a controlled job. So you have to remember, there's a lot of people who will be watching this. So, you know, I I think going back to the monthly, staying with the language that Chip has suggested otherwise, and then understand, it's still at the sole discretion of the town. So if we are doing something in an area that requires greater oversight, obviously, they will come back and state that, in fact, they need to do that and they'll report that to the board. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, I think it works for me. I don't know.
Silence, sometimes you can't tell.
I mean, if you want to do it bi-monthly, then by all means.
Well, even I, even I will back that back, because there's different parts of this project where monthly is appropriate, and there could be different points in time where bi-monthly is appropriate, depending on what it is in fact you're doing. So the obligation, I'm even going to correct you, to obligate simply by saying bi-monthly may be overbearing, but as long as we put in there that the town's agent can, in fact, say that they need to have an expert come in or something that triggers it, that it should there be something that occurs, obviously, that could be increased for that period of time.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does that work for you, Mr. Dempsey? I think we're trying to get to the same place, we're wordsmithing.
Yep, I already said that's fine.
Okay. Number 14, we we stated in 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 our response back that we believe there's two exceptions to that. And and the first one is the easier one, which is the issue of the turtles. Natural heritage proclaims to us that you can only do it in certain times of year. It falls in November 1st to April 15th. So that needs to be an exclusion just because we need to do what they want us to do as well. So let's bifurcate the issue. Is that okay, Mr. Dempsey, that we carve out as a starting point natural heritage requirements?
We have a way of dealing with, we we have a way of dealing with that, and that is waiver requests. So rather than us today having the board grant a unspecific lifetime waiver to the, to the bylaws, rules on resource area seasonal restrictions, I would prefer that each time that seasonal restriction can't be lived with for whatever the reason, that in writing, the applicant appeals for a waiver and gives us a reason, gives the board a reason to grant that waiver, whether it's for turtles, whether there's some construction reason where it can't be done and that they have to pay a fee for that waiver on a daily basis. We found that under the commission, it enhances, enforce, in compliance with the bylaw in protection of habitat, protection of resource areas.
Well.
I think, Joe, what we need to go back is to what Paul reminded us several times, is the permitting authority and the enforcement authority is the ZBA, it's not the.
I understand.
So that to to require us, on this part of the ZBA decision, to go have to go back to the Conservation Commission for a waiver, I believe is inappropriate. I think that what we we said to you, that there were two, you meaning the ZBA and the commission, there were two items that we needed to keep flexibility for to perform work, and those are included. Anything else is outside.
Well, let let me separate, I was going to go even one step further. So so, Mr. Dempsey, we can't, in one respect, have all these things incorporated because you're trying to make sure we protect it. But in the other, you're saying that we have to kind of, I think there's an inconsistency, and I think Paul's correct. But I I do, however, respect the fact that the commission may want to know. So if you're only asking if 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 it could be reworked, because I believe natural heritage, we have to do what their plan is already be approved, that you want us to provide notice for that. I I'd notice is one thing, because then you have the rights to have your, come in and do inspections and what have you. That's a, that's a different story than the issue of the fact we have to come in and at that point ask permission. I think that that's inappropriate when we're trying to incorporate so much into the ZBA. So I disagree about the issue of the turtles. I think that that's natural heritage has laid out a plan that they have approved the bill, and I think that that's fair and reasonable to allow him to perform under that set.
Yeah, there's. We can't agree to a, we can't agree to a subsequent permitting process where there could be denials with no due process or
Right.
but notice is fine. We can't agree to additional fees too, that I I don't think could possibly be legal anyway, you know? So notice, great, we'll keep everyone informed, but we're not going to submit, we can't submit and nor can you justify submitting to subsequent permitting processes. That's why we're here, let's load in what we have to load in here to give everyone the safeguards.
Right.
No more permitting processes on top of what we already have to do.
And then to the issue of the road, actually, you know, the road is being constructed of which then you're going to build 192 units behind it. The road requires that certain erosion controls be put in place and inspected. But during any construction cycle, there may have to be work on that road to continue to ensure that it maintains integrity, that it's passable, that it's this, that it's that. I just think that, again, carving it out, I think that we protect the conservation interest in the fact that we have an erosion system that requires inspection, which is the purpose of all that. And therefore, to say that we shouldn't have that carved out of, we can't work in that timeframe, I think it's contradictory. I think it's reasonable, and I think as long as we maintain erosion controls and it's to be inspected and maintained, I think that all interests are, again, protected.
So how is your project any different than any other construction project that goes on in our town and has to comply with this order that we would normally place in a local bylaw permit? Every, we've dealt with plenty of other construction sites where they have habitat issues. We work it out, we've dealt with plenty, if not all, with roadway construction in developments, and they work it out. So the people work it out when you know that you don't have a blanket ability to do anything you want at any time. It enables a tighter construction timetable, and it also further protects the habitat and the environment, and it is good for compliance. So I understand, you know, everybody says the same thing that you say, why should we have to do this? Gee whiz, you know.
I like to sum it up, so the habitat that we're protecting, that's fine. It's the habitat we're building that needs to be done between November and April. It's the only time I can build the five acre nesting habitat and all the other land that's going back. The seasonal restriction for the roadway work, no problem, I'll say ah that. Seasonal restriction behind building three, no problem. The turtle habitat plans have to be built between November and April. That's it, I'm working in the, in that CI restricted area in the turtle habitats from November to April, that's the only time I have, November to April this year, November to April next year. And hopefully that's
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have, I don't have any issue adding the habitat exemption from that, and we can word it in a way that, you know, accounts for whatever the timelines are that are required by the the habitat timelines. I'm not sure if anybody else on the board has an issue with that, I mean, if, and, you know, the roadway, we can even include the roadway for any, you know, repairs or any other issues outside of major construction or however the wording would work, you know, I have no problem with that either. If you have to fix the roadway or whatever, you should be able to go in and do that.
We could use my, we could use my language in A five and just replace construction with the use of the word repair.
Repair and maintain or whatever, whatever that standard would be.
I think it's important as Bill, this is not Bill Daley saying I can only do the work between November and April. This is natural heritage telling Bill Daley because of the breeding and other requirements that you can't do work after April fifteenth. This is, this is not his, his preference, this is what natural heritage requires, and this is what the permit says.
Well, I understand that, Mr. Nylund, but that's the same issue that we come up against on every single case where natural heritage is involved, and we work it out.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not coming, we don't want to negotiate after fact, Mr. Dempsey. That's the point of what I think we're trying to drive at. This is, this is, this is a forty B of which you don't have those off in the town. Matter of fact, generally speaking, you've never had it. And the answer is, I think what you've heard is a carve out for that particular situation, and the road to be limited down to repair and maintenance. And I think that that's a fair compromise to the party's interests, and I look to the board to make its ultimate decision. Item number fifteen, so where we disagree with that, you stated twenty, we stated five, and ours included the language it said, to the extent required, the applicant shall replenish said bond or deposit if needed. So again, I, the town is not paying a lot of interest on any money sitting in the account, but to borrow money to fund twenty thousand dollars costs a lot of money. So I think that as long as we're required to replenish the account, and if you want to put a trigger point when it gets down to a certain amount, I personally think the language pertaining five thousand dollars and how it gets replenished should be satisfactory to this board.
Question from Mr. Dempsey, so should now, have you had to use this money in the past on other projects? And if so, what would you say the average cost would be, let's say, for an emergency repair? Let's say to call somebody in on a Sunday because something's going on, is five thousand dollars adequate? To me, it seemed a little low, but I don't know if that's adequate, if there is a trigger point with which they have to do it. But would five thousand dollars cover, let's say, one incident?
Well, for a project such as this, you know, twenty thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket. We had to, we did have one previous case where we did have to dip into the funds for a project on Center Street quite a while ago, and I mean, the minimum we've ever asked for is ten thousand dollars. So, you know, I'm just amazed that they think that five thousand dollars is more than enough.
Well, my only comment to that is regardless of the size of what one thinks or not, it's really not the question at hand that it's a drop in a bucket. So that, that I don't think is the appropriate comment. I think Kathy's is fair enough to say that, you know, what happens if? And remember, the areas in which we're talking about are really a short stretch along the side of the road as it runs up. Once we get up to the top of the hill, we really, we do have erosion control, of course we do, but it's not the volatile areas at that point in time. So I stand by the request, but again, you know, the board has to decide what is it, what they are comfortable with here. I think twenty thousand dollars though is excessive, and not just because it's a large project, should we necessarily put a large sum of money? Unless, of course, Rebecca can find us a four or five percent return on our dollars, then, you know.
And one other question, I guess, to Paul on that, in terms of these bonds, is there, is it common to specify bonds for specific uses, you know, one at a time? Or was it more, should we be grouping them more together and covering a wider, broad use of the money and just the general availability?
I would generally have any bonding requirement be an overall bonding requirement rather than being quite so specific. I don't see the need to have, you know, four different types of bonds for four different potential problems. It tends to be a little bit excessive.
Yeah, so I think the actual value is something we can address when we look at the whole picture and any other, you know, conditions or something that require it, and then, then we can kind of adjust that. I don't think we need to dwell on the specific value right now. We can kind of account for that in the total.
I think we need to remember too, that's if I don't correct it.
Yes, that's only if they step in because of failure for you to act, Phil, that's correct.
I mean, I'm here, all my equipment's there, you know, I'm the guy that's fixing anything, so.
The only, the only thing I'd say there, and this will be familiar to Paul again too, is that the standard security for the project infrastructure likely is not going to be financial security. It'll, it'll likely look more like a covenant where you'll be withholding occupancy or building permits until we complete infrastructure. I suppose at some point later in the project, it might be a switch over to financial. But it strikes me that what Mr. Dempsey wants and what we're willing to provide is financial upfront for this because of money is necessary during the construction project potentially for this. So I think that the chairman, Jason, your, your, your point is well taken. There'll probably be an overall condition in Paul's decision that relates to project infrastructure security. Whatever it is, you collect a number of different items that need cash upfront, put it in there. I just want to note for the record that we're not going to put up several millions of dollars upfront for the roadway security, we'll live with something that looks more like a subdivision covenant where you'll control us and have security in the nature of occupancy or building permits. But we are willing to put up cash upfront for this item because we understand that it's something that may require it.
Yeah, I would say there is some sort of, you know, cash upfront for this particular item. Because when those emergencies happen, they need the money now, and Mike's going to be able to get the money quickly, which getting the money from any town is always a process to begin with. So if you are only guaranteeing performance by withholding occupancy, but you're only three days into construction, that really doesn't matter. So the idea is to have some cash, right? So you need, so, all right, so here's what, here's what I was, so Mike is asking for twenty. Chip is asking for five. Why don't you split the difference, you know, and just leave it at, what is it?
Well, I think, the other way you might say it, the other way to say it is, is that Mr. Dempsey gave him one other indication, an illustration of which he says that they've never accepted anything less than ten. So while I may be kicked though virtually by my client, why don't we say ten? And move to the next point. There's a lot more, there's more to go. And don't forget, it still has a trigger of being having to be replenished.
That's fine.
Okay, sixteen, Chip, I'll let you talk about that. And I guess it goes with sixteen and seventeen go somewhat together, correct?
Yeah, I think that I believe that they're duplicative with what I have provided in mind, but basically, you know, we're stating is that we have to follow the requirements of the, of the comprehensive permit, and, and we can provide them with copies of things that we file. I don't think we have a problem with that.
So you're saying that there, that Mr. Dempsey's language in sixteen and seventeen are acceptable to you?
Similar to what we've talked about, which is that natural heritage is one who's controlling. They're the ones that have jurisdiction, what they're, they're telling us is we have to follow the law, which we, we have to already, and that if there are copies of communications, we provide a copy to the commission.
Sure, that's fine, okay. So sixteen and seventeen were in agreement to that.
Well, seventeen talks about paying for the costs.
I see, I knew I was trying to get you on that.
I believe that is to natural heritage, it's a little ambiguous, right? I, I believe that that's just to natural heritage and not a separate payment to the Conservation Commission.
And I think that's, Mr. Dempsey, your intent is it not that that be, anything that the state may require, then of course we will pay to the state?
No, these aren't things that you pay to the state. What this is, is if the eight acre portion has a conservation restriction on it, I think what you intend to do, and it's not owned by a state agency, that natural heritage enforces certain costly items for that conservation restriction, such as a hat, long-term habitat, a long-term habitat management plan, long-term monitoring, reporting, ongoing maintenance.
That's in the CR.
I got all that stuff, I got all of it.
It's in the CR, we don't have to have it here, we have to, that's
I'm not saying, I'm not saying you have to have it here, I'm saying the applicant should pay for those items.
Well, we have to anyway.
We have to, and whatever we have to do under the CR, Mr. Dempsey, we will continue to do. I think the point is it's redundant and inappropriate for it to be in this particular decision, though I appreciate the fact you wanted to make sure we were reminded of the fact that obligations under the CR are a cost. And the answer to that is yes, we understand that, but I don't think they need to be in the ZBA decision.
Well, I don't want the town to have to be carrying, if the town takes the CR, I want it specifically stated, and I don't see why it's harmful if you agree to it, that you will pay.
So you're suggesting here, what you're saying is that the CR ultimately is that it's gifted to the town, that the town not be burdened, that's what, I'm not saying we agree to that, but I'm just saying, that's your point?
Yes.
Okay. Chip?
We, you know, the last piece was donated to Fish and Wildlife. So we don't know what's going to ultimately happen with this piece. The town, the commission indicated that if it was offered that they would take it, but we're talking about something that was going to be part of the conservation restriction. It clearly have, if it winds up with a commission, they have the ability to negotiate that as part of the CR that we have to pay for it.
There you go, that, that's, he's right about that, Mr. Dempsey, that's really your control point. Again, not in here, but you're not, you're not automatically having to take that land, and your negotiation to accept it would include a provision if that was so agreed to by the parties at that time. So I think it's wrong in the ZBA decision, but understanding the point, it's something that could be dealt with downstream if that situation arises.
I just don't understand if you agree with it, why you don't want it in there.
Paul, do we need that in?
The question is, do you need that condition in the decision?
To protect the town from having to pay for it later.
Does the CR cover it?
It's not really something within your jurisdiction here. It's not an issue that is being requested under the local wetlands bylaw. This is something that's, you know, through the natural heritage process and within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. So I don't think it needs to be in the board's decision in order to protect the town. That being said, I don't see where the harm is either.
It was, and I don't know if Paul, you have all the specifics on this, is in terms of the donated land versus the forty B and the ongoing development, how do those things align? Like what, does the donated land really have any basis on the forty B beyond just being a, a benefit to the, the project overall, or, because the forty B is obviously an ongoing thing, the donated land is going to be donated, so it would no longer be part of that.
Correct.
In order for us, since this is, Mr. Chairman, this is Chip Nylund, this is priority habitat for the turtle. In order for us to perform any work on that site, we have to donate that, a certain percentage of the property to, either to natural heritage or to the town or to another public entity. So that's tied to the permit that was issued by natural heritage and not to the forty B permit.
Yeah, thank you, that's what I was trying to figure, where this fits into the whole thing.
Which is why we think it resides in the CR, and it shouldn't be bifurcated, to be written a little piece over here. And when the CR is really what really prevails in this particular thing, which is why we just resist it being included here.
Natural heritage doesn't care who pays for this. All they are saying, these things need to be in place, they don't care who, who pays for it. So I think it needs to be made clear, since it's a requirement that natural heritage is making on the applicant regarding the project, and I understand once the land is given over to whomever, that that kind of separates out. But again, it doesn't seem like you disagree with it, but for some reason you don't want it in there. Well, I don't see where it's any harm in putting it in.
I can make it
But also, I just want to clarify, the town doesn't have, also isn't putting in here an obligation to take that land if there's no other takers. So I think, I'm all right leaving it out, given that we don't have any obligation to take it. It's up to them to find somebody who will take ownership of it.
Correct.
With the town, and that negotiation is separate from the forty B. So if that doesn't go through, then none of this goes, you know, goes through anyway. Is my understanding of how this, the heritage part of it works in relation to the forty B.
You are correct.
And if it makes it any easier for the board,
And if it makes it any easier for the board, I have my whole conservation management permit. It's all spelled out in there, the net, the, the long-term net benefit to the species and all that. To keep it simple, DFW wants it, I'll give it to them, all set. So it's all laid out in the permit on, on how to do it with them, so we can leave it out.
Item number 18.
So I, 18 is just a procedural. I don't, I don't think that we need it. I think it's irrelevant. Basically, this is language that's in most orders of conditions. It says that you can't start the work in the jurisdictional area until your permit has been issued and the appeal period has run. Now, the, we don't have a conservation commission permit here. It's a ZBA approval. So I, I don't, I don't think it bears any relationship or is necessary or tied to the ZBA decision.
I concur. It's, it's like item number 17 in effect, in effect, because it's already given the fact that we can't proceed without it. And that includes any appeal period that might be or any, or what have you. So I agree with you. I just think it's, it's, it's not needed in this particular decision. I mean, I appreciate Mr. Dempsey wanting to be, reminding us of it. I just don't think it needs to be an integral part of the CBA 40B decision.
Yeah, because there is no order that's issued by the commission.
That's correct.
The same, and, and the next one.
Chip, I would clarify, there is an order being issued, though. It's part of the comprehensive permit decision issued by the board.
Yeah, but not an order of conditions.
That could be reworded to, instead of addressing an order, address the decision issued by the board.
Right. That, that's why, my point is it goes to the larger issue of the ZBA decision rather than. This is tied to a conservation commission approval or a corrad, which is also a conservation commission.
And Paul, we agree. That states that no construction will commence until the board's decision becomes final, which is. Likely different than what the regulations would allow. Technically are allowed to move forward and commence construction on a project, even if there's an appeal filed. I've never seen it done, however. I don't know how you're going to get your final approval. While there is an appeal pending, because you need to get a construction financing commitment for your final approval. And you can't commence construction until you've obtained final approval. So it's almost circular.
But, but it's not consistent with law, though, Paul.
Well, again. There is a provision that allows you to move forward at risk. However, you're not allowed to move forward without your final approval. And it will be.
For the purposes of the condition, it's not, I mean, we're not going to move forward till we get final approval. If you say in here that, and I'm assuming you will, that we can't commence construction until we have final approval, that's acceptable. But having something that says we can't move forward until appeal periods have lapsed is inconsistent with the status of law. I would certainly accept that final approval is required. As a practical matter, we're not going to move forward anyway. But having the appeal period lapse issue, save that for the order of conditions, but it's not appropriate here.
And that's fine. Mr. Chairman, as I was noting, one way or the other, you're going to be covered. Construction is not going to commence before the comprehensive permit is final. Because I, I've never seen it happen.
Unless you can print it for us, it's not going to happen.
I'm fine including it as a general, you know, the, the essence of the, the request without the specific wording for this, for the particular. Conservation conditions or wetland protection.
Okay, item 19. I'm not sure I understand, Mr. Dempsey, what you're referring to here by, you talk about the conservation commission?
Well, remember, again, these are commission. Every time you see the word commission, you can change it to the zoning board. That, that's not the point. My point is these were sample orders that we would put in, so.
Right, and then there will be general language that allows the board to retain peer review consultants where necessary and appropriate. So this specific provision is covered elsewhere.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. And we've been paying all along for just that privilege as well. So understood. Okay, item number 20.
I believe that we've resolved this with respect to the erosion control. Basically says that we can't do any work within jurisdiction until we have the erosion controls and, and the conservation commission gets notice. That's that B1, 2, and 3 that we dealt with earlier. So I, I think this is, I believe this is redundant.
Chip, I gotta highlight the, the entire site in the first sentence. Earth movement activities at the entire site to jurisdictional areas.
I hate it when you play lawyer. That's. I mean, we've, we've talked about that throughout the process, and I said that early on, that there were references in. Conditions that Chairman Dempsey added that, that go well beyond the jurisdiction of the, of the commission, so.
Well, I, I'll hope that Paul, when he goes in actually inserts and ties this all together, that he'll limit to the jurisdictional areas, the limiting factor.
But again, my, my point was I don't think that we need this provision at all, because I think.
Oh, I know that. I know that. It's redundant, but, but even where it's referenced elsewhere, I think the point was still. That it's limited to the jurisdiction of whatever that this is referred to, so.
Well, I, I would ask that the board take the applicant's. B3 and my number 20 and. Put them together because there's some items that are in B3 that I don't have. And there's some items in number 20 that aren't in the applicant's. Condition, and I, I don't think that any of them are conflicting. It's just a little bit more in each case.
Chip, is there, what, what in 20 do you have, other than Bill's limiting in the first sentence? Do you have any other issue with the concepts here, assuming that they were merged together?
I think, again, it's in the last sentence as well. There's a reference to the entire site.
Fair enough. I, I think we're, we've all gotten past the fact it's limited to jurisdictional areas.
Right, but other than that, they. The two, you know, they complement one another.
Okay.
If we can just add, like I say, the pre-construction meeting, what's provided at the pre-construction meeting. Just more information provided to the board and/or the commission.
Of course, some of this is, are the things that would be part of any order of conditions anyway, but.
Paul's, Paul's probably going to have a pre-construction meeting for general civil and other stuff too. So I'm sure he'll figure out a way to combine all these into kind of one big mega pre-construction protocol.
Yes.
And I, and I know it's getting late, but I did put that into B2 where we have, we supply the construction schedule, the review of the placement of erosion controls. We identify contractors and subcontractors, so, and give numbers and emergency. So I, I did address the pre-construction meeting.
So you're going to get at least a grade of a B on your report card for that, so, you know, that's fine. Paul's probably going to cut and paste something that's going to cover all these anyway. I'm sure he's written it before. 21?
Are you, are you all set with that, Paul, to kind of combine the two and?
I think so, yes.
Come up with something that both parties will. Be amenable to?
21?
Yeah, 21 is standard language, which just makes sure that you, again. As long as you're talking about the jurisdictional area, if, first of all, if there's a, a discharge, then we have to deal with it immediately. And if there's an obligation requirement, and then we're not supposed to be refueling or doing things within the buffer zone.
Okay, so 21, we agree, other than Paul can write it in his own words, but we're in agreement, okay? 22?
Same, that's just, a copy is made available and it's.
Yep.
There's, there's one item there I'd like to touch on, the shutdown. The commission reserves the right to shut the site down for 24 hours when no work shall take place. That's standard language? I've never seen it anywhere.
The commission doesn't have any authority, so I, I thought that we agreed that, you know, that.
Okay, so does he, so we, we insert the word ZBA. He's still asking the same question. Did I have the right to shut down for 24 hours? Doesn't, that has to be for cause, or doesn't have to be for, has to be for something?
And is it jurisdictional only?
No, it says it's, it's only for the placement of the permit. The, the condition says you just have to keep a, if for some reason we lose the copy of the permit, they can shut it down.
Oh, 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 oh.
That, that's what the cause is.
Oh, no, okay.
We, rather than the minimum of, rather than the minimum of 24 hours, should it be until the permit is presented on site? Exclusively, rather than both? Do we need both, basically would be the question. Do you need the minimum of 24 hours and the permit presented on site? We definitely want to present permit on site, but do we need a minimum of 24 hour is kind of a, that sounds like a penalty.
If they find it excessive.
There's a punitive aspect to that.
I'm just thinking, like, what if it's in Bill's truck and he's down at Nicole's and comes back and says, hey, hey, I got my ticket, you know? Like, are we shutting them down for 24 hours? That seems a little crazy, but. So, and on mine, I just put, basically, you're going to have, I'm assuming in your trailer of some sort. You're going to have a copy of all your building permits, all your permits are going to be on file, you have to show all that stuff anyway. Put it up on a cork board and be done with it.
There'll be a thousand copies in the trailer.
There'll be a thousand copies. There'll be wallpapering in the trailer. That's what you do.
This is my point. It's going to be there anyway, so, but I, I do agree that a 24-hour minimum is a bit excessive. It'd be, I agree with Jason, until the, until the permit is produced.
Yeah. Number, number 23?
So before we move on to 23, I, I, I think that the intent on number 22, and, and Mike can speak for himself. But I think there is a punitive intent to that provision. But there's also discretion that comes along with it. It doesn't require a 24-hour shutdown. It only gives the, the board the rights to do that. My interpretation of that provision.
No, you're absolutely right. It says reserves the right. It's, it's not mandatory. It's not shall.
Yeah, that's correct. Put it in there then.
Every tree that'll be there will have the permit posted to it. Okay, anything else? 23?
23 is.
Don't lose the permit.
Yeah, don't lose the permit, right.
23 is standard, that it has to be recorded in the registry and proof is shown before you start your work.
Number 24?
But to clarify, there isn't actually a provision that requires the recording of a comprehensive permit. However, there will be a condition in the decision that does require it. So it, yeah, ultimately it will get recorded.
Okay, again, you're going to write this up using your standard language. I'm sure you'll add it accordingly. 24?
24 is a general requirement that if you're performing work on more than an acre of disturbed area, doesn't matter what jurisdiction that you're in yet. You're supposed to notify EPA. It's a notice provision.
Fine. It's what keeps you employed, Chip.
I wish.
25?
Yeah, so the same, the NPDS stormwater permit. Again, that's for, it's a general certification, so I, I don't have any problem with that.
26?
The SWIP goes with the.
Right.
Water permit.
And the last one, which I'm sure we'll have some discussion, will be 27.
And I, I'm, I'm not sure that you're, you want to see that, because that, that would mean that you have to complete the entire project before. You get a certificate, a certificate of compliance, so we wouldn't want that.
No, we wouldn't want it, and it's, and it's not really practical for 192 units. It's a, it's a large project that, you know, a certificate of occupancy clearly will be issued for one building before another. Or at least, and, and so that means that there'll be ongoing still work. And, you know, final pavement won't go down into a, there are a lot of things that are moving targets. So I, I agree. I have trouble with this last item as well, too. Only because especially the size and scope of this particular project.
But there's also no certificate of compliance. Right, well, that's a question I was going to ask Jay. How does that work? It doesn't. There's going to be all kinds of other inspectional protocol that Paul's going to insert. Where the reviewing and inspectional engineer is going to have to sign off on work before building permits or occupancy. Permits or the next stage can happen. Those are the safeguards. It's not.
There's going to be requirements with regard to as-built plans, things of that nature.
Yeah, this, this does, just doesn't apply, so Paul's got it covered elsewhere. It'll be pretty verbose and it'll be well explained.
Yeah. Cut and paste again for a fee.
Well, there's no order of conditions under the bylaw, so there doesn't need to be a certificate of compliance under the bylaw. Understood.
Okay, so I believe, you know, that we have gone through all items on both letters. I'm not aware of any other outstanding issues regarding our discussions regarding conservation-related issues. Mr. Dempsey, is there anything else that we have missed?
No. I, some, some other items did come up. I'm going to see if I can. Organize and they're not necessarily. Conservation. Items, so that's why I'm not sure, but I'll put that in writing if I possibly can and get it to the board. But I appreciate the board allowing me to give you these examples.
Mr. Dempsey, I'm just confused by your last statement. Can you give an example of what you're referring to, that there's other issues? That sounds like a dangling part of the full source.
Well, I, I'll put it in writing.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, I, I assume that we're probably going to continue to finish this at the next meeting. But we, we've had this from the conservation commission for the last three meetings, and the list doesn't end. I thought the purpose of the last meeting was to put everything in writing, which we've both done. I don't want to, I, I don't think my client or anybody wants to see this continue further with more proposals.
Yeah, we're hoping that we turn and that the board supports the idea, Mr. Haverty, circulating surely a draft decision. That incorporates all these things of which I don't think we need to meet to review these letters again. I think Paul's got what he needs to prepare a decision that incorporates these items, of which, of course, there'll be review by the board. So I'm a little taken back by the statement, which, which is why I sort of perked up.
It was just mentioned that they don't, they don't have to do with conservation, so. I mean, like, like we said before, this is my third meeting for this with, with four, four or five members, my team. For the third time for, you know, six, seven, eight hours, however long we spent on it. I, I just, if, if he's got some issues that came up, let's, let's get them out right now.
Yeah, I, I concur.
I thought we were just going through six at 7:30, but we went, we just went through 27. Let's, let's, let's have them.
Well, that, that was one of the questions. Mike, he said they don't have to do with conservation. Is it not related to the conservation commission? Are they more general concerns or?
Yeah, general.
And in that case, then we can put the, file that under not conservation-related and just be general public comment, which we're still. Leaving open for, so, I mean, if he wants to raise some concerns, we can decide whether or not we need to address them. I don't have a problem with that. I don't think we necessarily need to get into all the details now of any other general public comment. That may come in between now and the next meeting.
Just to touch on that, i- i- if it's public comment as a citizen or as a, as a board, because do I need to have more experts there? When will I find out what the comments may be?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question, Mr. Dempsey. Can you differentiate? Because there are two, I'm, I'm paid to be here every time because Bill loves me, but the other people, he doesn't love as much. So can you at least tell us that much?
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, so can you please confirm for us that in your capacity as representative of the, of the conservation commission? Are you satisfied with what we've gone over tonight?
Yes, as I say.
Yes, as I say.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we had a point in time in our deliberation where. A draft decision could be circulated and that we can begin discussion of it at our next meeting, whenever that might be.
I have to defer to Paul, but I think we're getting very close to. Having something we can start to work through.
Yes, I mean, I do need to go through and and add all of these new. Conditions and I also still need to go through. Peer review letters and add conditions that are suggested in those letters and of course. First and foremost, we need to get some direction as to what project the board wants to grant an approval to. Because as you recall, there was 192 unit projects that was originally submitted to the board. And then there was a reduced 148 unit project that was submitted after the safe harbor noted. Added to the applicants. The board at that time held its options open as to which project it wanted to consider and it said that it would. Review the 192 unit project. To see if it would consider approving a project of that size rather than the 148 unit project that the applicant submitted as its revised proposal. So then, you know, there's a lot of things that flow from that determination. So that is something I don't necessarily need it tonight, but it's something, you know, the board needs to have on its radar in terms of providing direction with regards to that issue.
And and our and our and the peer review throughout the entire process was based on the larger project, so we anticipated. In all those discussions, any issues that would come about regarding traffic or anything else as part of that. I'm just reinforcing that that was sort of the overall way in which we approached it to to allow the board at this point. The flexibility to make a decision relative to that. And to that, I will, I'll remind the board, I know, I know that you already know this is, is that. The town has not fulfilled its 40B obligation. A while it is, this land was also deemed in its housing production plan as being appropriate for 40B. Uh, we've demonstrated, I think, through the process that the site can support 192 units. Um, it puts it very close to achieving the towns, if it does not, depends on the census, its obligations under 40B. Um, and and therefore, um, and it does provide affordable housing, which the town needs and a diversity of type of housing. And lastly, I will say that the pandemic has taught a lot of people, but has has accent at one point. That there is a need for this type of housing dispersed out into suburbs. Um, as well to that there's a truly need for this as an alternative. A type of hu- uh, housing to serve the public and, you know, hopefully future residents of the town. So we ask you in considering what Paul just said to please, you know, to consider 192. Um, and and for that I may add that, you know, it is based on that, that we have. You know, advanced forward and will continue the issue of the sewer expansion. If the project reverts back, we have still designated an area and we would need state permits to do it. Um, but we may have to then pull back and do onsite wastewater, so in the quid pro quo to the town as well. That sewer extensions, we hopefully perceive for both the manufacturer across the street and the residents that will be served. As a further incentive to support the notion of 192 unit project here at the quarry.
Any members of the board have any? Comments or discussions on that? We wanna.
Ready to make a decision on that yet? I'd like to go back and review some of the documentation that I've taken. The notebook I have is about this big, so I'd like to take a little bit of time and just go through that and. And maybe defer that to the next meeting, plus I'd like to see a draft from Paul, I think that will help. Frame. My thinking about it anyway.
Paul, would you like a decision before that, so it saves? Uh, so you can kind of zero in on the approval letter?
I I'm certainly happy to wait until the next hearing to give the board the opportunity to make some consideration. Of that question. It's gonna leave some blanks in the draft decision, but it's not gonna prevent me from completing it, you know, it'll just be a little rougher than it otherwise would. Um, I actually, regarding the sewer question, it's it's a good point that was brought up. I I'm not sure what the impact is if this is not going to be a connection to the municipal sewer system. The board really hasn't spent any time examining the potential for an onsite wastewater treatment facility. And I don't know where that would be located, I don't know what the wetlands impacts that would be associated with that would be. So are we issuing a decision that actually, you know, presupposes a connection to the to the sewer system? Or, you know, is the board willing to consider a decision that really leaves that question unanswered? And would have to be addressed at a later date? I don't know where the applicant is on that question either.
Don't forget, if we were to ever pursue, and it's really not our intent, I mean, we truly want to because we think that it is. It is, it achieves so many objectives of the town in. The sewer extension and the size of the project, and we think it's very appropriate for that. That, of course, we would need to go get a wastewater treatment facility permit from the state, which in itself would therefore require a whole series of events that would also involve the town. It doesn't necessarily preclude that there are many steps.
My question is, if we're issuing a decision that states that this is going to be a sewered project. And at some point in the future, you make a determination that sewer is not feasible here. And that wastewater treatment facility is going to be the process in which you're going to deal with your your wastewater. Then that would trigger a. Modification request to the board to modify its comprehensive permit. And then the board would have to make a determination as to whether or not that proposed modification is either substantial or insubstantial. So I just wanted to make sure that that was an issue that was being considered and addressed as part of this decision. And I think, you know, if the board had received sufficient information with regards to the potential location. Of a wastewater treatment facility and what those impacts that could be associated with it would be. You know, then the board could potentially issue a decision that states, you know, either sewer or onsite, you know, maybe with a preference for one over the other. But without knowing what the impacts of a potential onsite sewer treatment facility would be, I don't think the board really is in a position to do that.
Well, be- before we get down that road, because, okay, it complicates the question, and I appreciate that, Paul. Is that, again, you know, what makes it so harder also in the middle of a decennial census, we, you know, believe, and I think that most people that. You know, the town's requirements increase as it relates to 40B. And again, back to, you know, this site has always been deemed appropriate and we've demonstrated its capacity to support this. And so, and by the way, just to correct you, Paul, 144, not 148.
Okay.
Okay, so I was, um, so that being said.
My recollection in the letter that was issued, reducing the number of units, it said 144, but then that was crossed out and written over, it was 148.
I I don't, I don't remember that, there there, it's it's multiples buildings, but we, again. You know, I think Kathy raised a good point, it's a good point in time, especially being late tonight, that maybe we pause on this. And maybe this becomes the point of our next discussion. To framework exactly where we're gonna go with this, because this has been the. You know, big unanswered question that we've left on the table for a long period of time.
Well, that actually brings me to my next discussion, which is. Scoping this to a timeframe and when our next meeting would be. Um, before we make any final decisions on. What we're gonna include in our. Pre- uh, decision draft. Um, because the standard meeting time would be three weeks, which I think is fine if we do a rough draft. And. I know Paul has some of this are compiled, so, you know, if we assume, you know, whatever he can get done in that time is okay for us to proceed with those. Discussions around the the building counts and the sewers and that. Or if we want a more formal. Draft, basically, um, that'll require more time and we push the meeting out a little further. And make some of those decisions.
I don't know whether the board ultimately has to have really two votes, one is to increase the number. As one vote and second then would be to approve the the decision. So I don't know whether and and how that's done, but it could be that it's, Jay, Paul, isn't it two really votes that they have to take? Relative to this?
Well, the first vote they're gonna have to take is to determine the number of units that they.
Correct.
Inclined to approve. Mr. Chairman, I am pretty far down the road on the draft decision. Um, and the number of conditions that are proposed to be added here from tonight's discussion shouldn't take me too long. So I think that I can have something for you, you know, we can advance of October 7th, if you did want to schedule it for that night.
Um, any conflicts or issues? I mean, I think that meeting would be more discussion around. A review of the draft, obviously, but also these particular issues around the the building counts and the sewer and how that gets included. More than a a a file, you know, discussion on the draft.
We agree, I think it's reasonable, I think you're going in the right direction, Jason, in the fact that. Our hope is that two more meetings, we will reach a point where the board is in a position to vote, so if. If three weeks from now we're reviewing together, uh, first a discussion account and then reviewing together where Paul is at the draft at that point. It may be then as Paul and Jay work together that, you know, they, you know, by the following meeting, you know, you you'll be in a position to vote. I mean, that's, you know, hopeful. So October 7th is certainly okay for our meeting, our meeting, if if that's how long Paul needs to still finish it up and circulate it.
I don't have a problem with October 7th, because I think. If I can work with what Paul gives us, then I'll, in the meantime, I can go through all my stuff, because there may be things that I made notes about that maybe I want to bring back to. To the table or maybe add to the decision or or whatever, so I just want to make sure I review everything. I'm sure Paul was very thorough and figured everything out already, but just in case, I just want to make sure.
I wouldn't be so sure of that.
Well.
I would be very surprised if you didn't have things to add to it.
Remember Kathy, you don't preserve, you don't reserve movie and book rights, so just because you were the better note taker.
Well, it was, you know, when did we start this process, a long time ago, unfortunately, I'm getting older and I can't remember everything, so I do have to take notes, so I just want to go back through. But I think I can have that by October 7th, what do you guys think, Jason, John, Chris? Does that give you guys enough time?
Yeah, I have no issue with October 7th.
Okay.
And and is it reasonable that the board at this point, I, we don't need Chip or or Brian from Oxbow to attend it, right? We're not, this is, this is separate at this point, right? Is, or or let me rephrase that. If there is a belief that somewhere along the way where you want them to attend because it's some other question, could you please let us know? And we will, you know, exclude them from the discussions at this point.
Yeah, I think we've worked through the. Conservation Commission's concerns and most of those addressing, so whether or not you want them, there is up to you. But we will certainly raise any questions that we think might be addressable to them and even, you know, they don't necessarily need to be there to respond if we can get them in a timely manner, too, so.
Absolutely, Kathy may have a question about traffic, we have to turn to our traffic, I mean, we absolutely understood.
I think I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for. What was the application number again?
You should know it by heart by now.
Twenty 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 two, 2006 or something, what was the number?
It only.
Twenty nineteen dash three. So twenty nineteen dash three, continue the public hearing till October 7th at 7:30 ish.
Are we doing that through Zoom, I assume? Are we still zooming or is Town Hall gonna be open at any point?
I I'm gonna go on the assumption that we're still on Zoom at that point, if we need to adjust, then. I can drive to two minutes, but.
We, nothing much is gonna change.
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine they're gonna let more than 10 people in still, right? That's not gonna change between now and then.
It's, I, listen, we get to see both each other at the same time, Hollywood Squares.
See, but here, I can sit here and I don't have to wear my shoes, I can just, you know, relax a little, it's nice.
How do you know I'm not wearing pajamas? I mean.
I can drink my coffee, you know, it's easier.
And honestly, I save an hour drive home, so it's not so bad either, so.
Well, that's the other thing, too, you know.
I say hit them that owl.
Anyway, Jason, I think.
That's the downside.
Well, watch your bills, Bill, because you want to make sure you're not getting hit for travel time.
Yes, up and down the stairs is costing them a lot of money, trust me.
I'm sitting in a bowl of Jell-O, by the way.
Wow.
Yep.
Right, that's frightening.
Uh, Jason, I will second your motion.
All those in favor? Kathy?
Aye.
Uh, Chris Goodwin? Joan Stokes?
Aye.
And we almost get to say aye, we almost get to say aye, so, but we'll be there.
Thank you.
You already did.
There you go, thank you all very much, and as always, please be safe.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
I'm on it last.
Minutes, that the only other thing we got?
Yes. Just have to find them, lost them. I actually, I I didn't have any changes, I thought they were fantastic. Oh, actually, I did have one change, I take that back.
Not that fantastic.
I'm sorry, is one quick thing. Line 106. Brian Butler is with Oxbow, O-X-B-O-W. That was it, everything else was fabulous. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for. Wednesday, August 19th, 2020?
I will second it. All those in favor, Kathy Frantzen?
Aye.
Joan Stokes?
Aye.
And Chris Goodwin?
Aye.
And I, Jason Norman, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I did just want to make a note that I did get. A gentleman who is interested in applying for an application for 301 Main. He had submitted the application after the scheduled deadline of the 10th of the month prior to. The application also didn't have all of the items that it needed to, such as an updated certified of butters list, et cetera. So I told him that I could not accept the application and that he was to get that information in prior to the 10th of October. And if he does that, then he would be on the agenda for the November meeting. He asked for an exception, but that was the policy that you had as a board put together in your regulations, so I held true to that. So hopefully he'll respect that and get back to us, but I did want to give the board an update as to another application coming through.
Was there any use specified?
Um, it looked as though they were looking for use as a. Personal detail shop, so a car detail shop of some sort. So kind of extending the non-conforming use or allowing a a non-allowed use.
Okay.
Well, I have a question about that. Maybe I'll research it offline. Never mind.
Yeah, you can answer your question if you like.
Well, I'm wondering about the two-year statute of limitations. That's what popped into my head.
That was kind of one of the things I believe that the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer had stated that in order to get by that, he would need to file for the zoning board of appeals to offer that relief from said regulations.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. We will look forward to that application.
Yes, and as protocol, as soon as it is received, I will forward over all of the information. But I want to make sure that they are submitting a complete application before doing so.
Yes, because I, we definitely ran into that in one of the previous applications. So it does, it's very important to make sure that all the pieces are in there. Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing for me.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 10:06.
Seconded.
Kathy Branson?
Aye. I should say.
John Stokes?
Aye.
Chris Goodwin? And I. We'll see you all in three weeks.
Good night and God bless.
Good night.
You guys.